22 meeting of the Columbia County Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Sir, if I could ask you to remove your cover while we're inside. Thank you very much. If you'd stand with us, Commissioner Wilder will lead us in our invocation and Commissioner Futch will lead us in the pledge.
Y'all bow with us. Dear Lord, we want to thank you for another beautiful day. Thank you for all this rain that you brought to us to help everything grow and our community be beautiful. We asked you to look over us this evening, give us a wisdom this evening. Oh, we asked that you give us all safe passage home for all of us here that have taken time to come out, participate in our government. All these things in Jesus's name we ask you. Amen.
Flag United States of America.
To the public for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And if I could remind you to please silent your cell phones during the meeting. We do have all five commissioners present tonight and gentlemen, excuse me, everybody okay? Okay. You've also had a chance to review the minutes from the previous meeting. I believe we had two commissioners absent. If you've had a chance to review the minutes from July 7th meeting and they meet with your approval, I need a motion for approval as submitted.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? The approved passes three zero with two abstentions. You've also had a chance to review the agenda for tonight, gentlemen. If there are no substitutions or amendments, I need a motion for approval as submitted.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve the agenda as submitted passes five zero. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to clarify that the Planning Commission is a recommending body to the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. The decisions made on rezoning and variance requests tonight will be forwarded to the Commissioners for final action on August 2nd at 6:00 PM in these same chambers. You wish to address the Board of Commissioners at their meeting, please see Ms. Catherine Wees. Wise? Wise? Got it. She's brand new, so we're having to get used to her, to obtain a request to speak for them. We're less formal in this meeting. If you would like to voice an opinion on something in our public hearing that's on the agenda, please raise your hand. We'll ask you to come up to the microphone and give us your thoughts for three to five minutes. We do have a second opportunity if there's something you'd like to address that's not on the agenda in the public comments section at the end of the meeting. Again, raise your hand. We'll ask you to come up, spend three to five minutes and give us your thoughts to be put on the record for posterity's sake and for the Commissioners to consider when they review these minutes before their next meeting. Excuse me. That being said, let's move right into tonight's agenda. We've got plan revision. Mr. Butler, file RZ 220707.
An insurance request for minor S1 plan revision to move the driveway to 216 South Bel Air Road, currently zoned S1 special. This location of the property on the east side of Bel Air Road. Again, the property is currently zoned S1, originally rezoned back in 2018 with some revisions earlier this year. Prox to the north and south, you have a mixture of C1 and C2. You do have some residential to the rear there. Across street, you have some P1 and also R2. Shows the aerial view of the property again, currently undeveloped existing site, also the plot of the property. So this is a currently approved plan. We're basically going to be looking at the driveway here on the next slide. There is a comment on, can you go back to the previous slide, please? There was a comment within the narrative on this request that asked to move this fence back here. That was actually a condition of zoning, so we can't do that with this, with this minor plan revision. So there's a condition that speaks to that. So again, like we just saw a few minutes ago, we have the driveways being flipped from the south side to the north side, very minor revision here. Again, there is a, there is really no impact to anything on the property. This is a G dot road. They will have to get G dot approval in order to do this. There's not really any concern from that. We haven't talked to G dot directly about this property, but again, should be relatively simple. That'll be handled during a site plan review. In terms of the future development map, actually, I didn't put it on there. So this is within the professional corridor. Again, the use in the past would not have, the use actually would not really fit within this area now, however it was approved a while back. So again, it does meet the intent of that criteria because of that. Staff has recommended approval with the condition, again, with the request to move the buffer fence is not approved with this application. That includes staff recommendation.
Thank you, sir. Gentlemen, any questions, staff? Is the applicant here this evening? Is there anyone here that'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve with conditions to disapprove or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with condition file RZ 220707, minor S1 revision. Our property located at 216 South Bel Air Road.
With conditions?
With conditions.
Thank you, sir. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? To approve passes five zero. Ms. Montgomery file RZ 220705.
Yes, sir. This is a request for rezoning from RA Residential Agricultural to S1 Special for a ready-mix concrete plant at 3448 Gordon Highway. This is the location of the property on the south side of Gordon Highway, near the Richmond County line, and it is currently zoned RA Residential Agricultural, as are the majority of the surrounding properties. You do see a few other S1s in the area. Those are churches, mobile home park, and undeveloped site for a kennel. And there is one small piece of C2, little piece of C1, but the majority of the properties around it are RA. This is the area of the site and see a large portion of it has been cleared but is undeveloped. And the proposal is to use the rear portion of the property for a ready-mix concrete plant. So the left-hand side here shows that rear portion of the site that would be utilized, and then the site plan on the right. Now, the intent is that this concrete plant would be temporary, in place for no more than five years. So the permanent improvements to the site are limited. It is construction of the rock and sand bins and the retention pond, and the majority of the other construction on the site is portable. So there are three trailers that would be placed on the site for the office, the chemical storage, and refrigerated storage. The batch plant itself is portable. It would, of course, be erected on the site. The estimated height is less than 30 feet. And then there would be an additional silo, two cement storage trailers, and two aggregate conveyors. There is an existing well and electrical service on the property that would be utilized. There is a condition proposed from Development Services regarding permitting for any electrical work associated with this business. In terms of operations, the plant would operate three days during the week and the occasional Saturday with hours of operation between 6:00 AM and 11:00 PM. This is in line with both the county noise ordinance as well as the use provisions for concrete plants when they operate in the M1 light industrial district. This is the existing site. This is from Gordon Highway, so this is the driveway heading in. You can see there's pretty good tree cover there on Gordon Highway. And further into the site, it is being used for some storage at the moment. In terms of the future development map, this area is in an employment corridor. This area is intended to accommodate light industrial and professional uses without encroaching on adjacent residential neighborhoods. The intent is to have a, you know, well-functioning corridor with some additional employment opportunities, and the buffering is a key point of concern here. The applicant is proposing to leave the existing tree cover. That is over 100 feet wide in places along the south and the east property lines. There is a portion on the west property line that's largely cleared that would need to be planted, and there is a condition proposed that would address that. The larger concern is that in this case, there is an existing neighborhood adjacent to this property, and a concrete plant is a heavy industrial use and is generally not an appropriate use adjacent to residential. So while the, while the employment corridor could potentially allow a use like this, in this case, we do not feel that this parcel is the right location on the corridor, and staff therefore is recommending disapproval.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Gentlemen, any questions, staff? Commissioner Dempsey, I didn't realize you had a toll road named after you in the county. All right. Is the applicant here? Is there anything you'd like to come forward and add to the presentation? Please come forward, give us your name and home address.
Can you, can we turn the, if you raise that up?
All right. So what we came up with is a different plan for the buffer on the right side of the property. With our concrete plant now that we have on Columbia Road, we're able to produce concrete retaining blocks, and that was the plan for the buffer on the right side of the property. It could also be planted if we needed to plant. Where the plant goes in this property, 17 acres, it would only take up maybe four or five acres of that property in the middle of it. So as far as a buffer for the company and the plant itself, there would be an additional, probably at least 115 foot between the plant itself and the property line. As far as the, as far as the...
Sir, if I could ask you to please remove your hat while you're in the meeting. Thank you very much.
As far as the subdivision on the right-hand side, there's at least 115 foot of tree cover between the property line and the opening of the property.
And you can draw on that screen.
Yeah. We got, we got a draw in here that we was going to submit to y'all that shows the footage.
And so we'd have at least 40 foot on that side wall and a wall across the front, so you wouldn't be able to see from the road. Just have access coming around the wall there. Have the site plan right in here. Put the aggregates on this side over here.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions? All right. Thank you all. Is there anyone that'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Yes, ma'am. You had your first, your hand up first, young lady there with the, with the colorful top spot. Please give us your name and home address.
Wendy Scott. My address there is 3524 Gordon Highway and a 3510 on the property adjacent. And then my parents, they have the property next to me. This is family property and family land. It's been this way for over 100 years. We've taken care of that property. We've made sure the animals are taken care of. We've made sure the trees are taken care of. My husband goes out there on the weekends and we cut grass. I mean, my dad is over 80 years old and he cuts the grass. We cut limbs. We have a road back there that we've cut, so the tractor could go back there and we ride the kids around. I mean, this, this is agriculture. My dad has a gigantic garden where he plants flowers and vegetables, and we have bees that we have, and the bees are a new business for us. We just started a couple of years ago, me and my dad. And I can't see, I know where the property is. I can see it and I hear it. He has also bought, I believe, the property next to that, that the property used to belong to the Galloways. And anyway, they're not taking care of that property as in planting and taking care of it. They did have a tree, I think a tree removal service there, and it is a barren, ugly place. I went over there before to ask him a question, and I was really shocked at how bad it looked over there. And you can hear things over there, so I can imagine what a cement plant would, would sound like. This place, I know I'm taking a long time and I apologize, but this is very important to me and my family. I mean, I'm passing this property on to my grandchildren and hopefully their grandchildren. And like I said, we have really taken care of this property, and me and my husband are trying to put a home out there eventually. I do have a home on 3524 that was there forehand. Like I said, my parents live out there, and I just hope that you would reconsider and turn this down because it's not a place for a cement plant there. It's, it's not a place for any kind of industrial business. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Ma'am? Yes, sir. Do you have a question? Excuse me, ma'am. Would you mind coming back up? Commissioner Dempsey has a question for you.
Does your parents live there now?
Yes.
Do they live on that property?
They live right next to it, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Yes, sir. Please come forward and give us your name and home address.
Ox, how are you? I thought the shooting range there on Newman Town Road.
I remember you.
Yes, sir. Bobby Bowserman, 1447 Newman Town Road, Grove Town, Georgia, 30813, which is just about at the corner of Gordon Highway and Newman Town Road. I have about 15 acres in there. And I too have cattle and I have livestock and I have other things. But what I also have, experience working in a cement plant, because in the 1980s, I was the office manager for Southern Road Builders in Augusta, and I know some things about cement plants. And there's some startling revelations here. One is, they're going to be getting the water from a well. I know what it's like to have to drill a well, because my well gave out in water. A yard of concrete is about 40 gallons of water. A truck holds about 10, so you're looking at 400 gallons right there, plus you're looking at all of the washed-down water to wash the cement dust off. Figuring the cement dust, it's a carcinogen. It has chemicals in it, silicates in it, et cetera. And most plants have a way to mitigate that by having dust collectors, et cetera. But going back to the 1980s, when I worked there, you had to rinse your car off every day. So all of that cement dust is getting in the air. Stuff gets covered with white cement dust powder, and then you've got the washout. Trucks have to come in, they put all this water in the drums, then it out, dump it in the ground, and that groundwater's got to go somewhere. So we've got issues with water coming out of the ground, dust, and we've also got issues with what happens to the washout water. Where does it go? Right back down to the ground, that's where it goes. So I have issues with it, because I have experience with it, for one. And that's not the location. Everybody around there is kind of agricultural community, not noisy. We don't have that issue, and I like to keep it that way. So I appreciate the Commission's looking towards disapproval, and I hope that, I might have said something here that, that helps you come to that decision to not approve this, and I appreciate your time.
Yes, sir. Please come forward and give us your name and home address.
I retired, went 20 years in the Navy. I retired in 1974. The reason I'm telling you this, I come home, I'm a gardener, and we plant things for, if you pass my house, you'll see sunflowers, buckwheat, and we plant stuff for deer. We try to take care of this area. I married my wife in 1959, July the 31st. That's next Sunday, would be 63 years. Now, what the problem is, is got to realize, I don't know, I'm hard of hearing, and I don't know what's been going on, but I'm just going to tell you, water, water is the main source. Now, when I retired in 74, I could walk behind between my house and my wife's mother's house, and we had a stream of water, and I've seen little fish in it. And you wouldn't, you could, you can't dig a hole, hole deep enough to get water. Now, like in 74, I was saying, I put up some posts to build a fence, and you dig your hole, fill it up with water, and you had to wait. It ain't there anymore. The water is number one source. Now, a neighbor lives across the road over there, I think it's James, what's the name of that place across the road, tell me? Anyhow, he always planted his garden every year with mine, and we were kind of bragging over each other. And he run his little holes and watered his grass and everything, and then one, one, we always come to the little coffee thing at McDonald's. He'd come in one morning and said, you ain't gonna believe this. He said, my wa, my well went dry. I gotta have another well dug. Well, guess what? I've been, I've been watering my garden with a five-gallon bucket, not with a water hose. So, and I just want to emphasize you that water comes first, money comes last.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Would you like, please come forward and give us your name and home address?
My name is Robin Palmer. I live at 107 Sherland Drive, Grove Town. My property's on the corner up here where it's covered up. But yeah, this is my property here and here, and this property 20 years ago was a ceramic shop. I was going to buy it and put my office there, and the county told me it couldn't be a business. If that can't be a business, this shouldn't be able to be a business. I agree with everything they say.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Please come forward and give us your name and home address.
My name's Steve Claiborne, and I'm at 5513 Old Augusta Highway. My son Sean is here also. Now, Sean lives in this property right here, which right backs up against it. My property is over here on this side. Need to point out three things, and you probably already know this. The first is, the concrete plant should be listed under M1, which is light industrial, and not trying to be pigeonholed into the S1 category. Second, like has already been pointed out, water is a tremendous issue for us. I've already had to have a new well dug, dug a few years ago, and it's down almost 200 feet. Water coming off of a concrete plant, going to be tremendous, plus every concrete truck that rolls out of there, you're going to have to have 100 gallons put in it. And there's probably 20 to 30 going out of there a day when they have a project, I'm sure. Second is the health that's going to be tied to this. Concrete's made of silica, which is basically tied also to the same thing as volcanic ash. When you get that into your lungs, you can't get it out. That stuff hardens and it doesn't go away. You can look up on YouTube and you can see other residential areas that's behind a concrete plant, and they go out and they rub their hands across the front of the car and come up with it covered with silica dust or cement dust. So you've got the health and safety issue that's tied to that. The other thing is your traffic. Mr. Gray had his trucks going in there. They were large trucks, but they have a tight turn, and you've got all of that traffic from gate six going in and out of there. That's a tremendous amount of traffic in the morning and in the afternoon. You've got cement trucks that are going to try and go in there, bringing the cement in, make the concrete that are probably two and a half to three times as long as his trucks are. That's going to back up all of that highway traffic. Also had a few people killed along that stretch of the road because of traffic congestion, people trying to get out because of frustration and everything else. So traffic's going to be a major issue, especially during the school years, because you have school buses stopping up and down the highway. And then the last is what we call the constant source of nuisance, which is going to be your noise pollution. I don't know if they're planning on running electricity out there, but they've got a major generator built up. From being in the military, when one of those generators starts up and cranks up, you can feel it in your bones. Running that thing for 10 or 12 hours a day, it's going to drive people nuts after a couple of months. Then you've got the dust, the dirt, the sand, and last but not least, you've got a retention pond that's being built back there. It's going to collect all of that concrete and everything else that's being washed down. That's right in front of one of the houses that live back there. You've got homes on three side of the property and heavy traffic on the fourth side. This should not be approved, and I please recommend that you disapprove it.
Thank you very much. And with that, I'm going to close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve.
If we could take one second, can we get your revised sketch, please? Copy of it? Just in case.
Further copy for that.
Okay. All right. Go ahead and give that to Mr. Butler.
I mean, if, you want to let them respond?
Yes. Go ahead, go ahead. I'll give you a minute to respond. Thank you.
We're not here to, you know, try to throw everybody on that side of Gordon Highway, you know, into turmoil, but the cement dust, we do have dust collectors on this plant. This plant's operated at Fort Gordon since 2016, right next to the NSA building at Fort Gordon. So as far as dust, noise, and, you know, all that, going back to the retaining wall that we were going to put up, that's also, you know, it, it kind of helps with the noise. Well, water test, we, we run our Williston plant off of well water. We have to do tests to make sure everything's compliant with that. The retention pond, we have to get, you know, water samples from it to make sure it passes and meets all requirements for it. So as far as the animals and the, and the, and the water and trees and every garden that they got around there, it wouldn't be affected. The noise, the traffic, the traffic is, you know, that, that would be a, a different thing. There would be more traffic on that road. As far as the trucks coming in and out, I don't think it would, you know, as far as them coming in and out, there, there wouldn't be any difference in noise on that. The plant can be run off of power, so there's no noise other than the trucks. We do have a generator for that plant. It can run off a generator, run off a generator at Fort Gordon since 2016. It's never been an issue there. That's, the retaining walls was, was the big thing as far as trying to mitigate most of the noise and, and take care of that. Dust, I mean, silica and stuff that's in cement, unless you're breathing it in, you know, very close, it's not going to affect anybody. And then like I say, the site plan kind of shows the wall and the, and the footage between property lines.
All right. Thank you, sir. And with that, we'll close the public hearing, and I'll accept a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to disapprove RZ 22-07-05 rezoning from RA S1.
Do I hear a second? Any discussion? All in favor of disapproval? Motion to disapprove carries five zero. Mr. Butler file RZ 220706.
An insurance, sir. This is request for rezoning from R2 to CC for proposed retail and restaurant uses at all Furious Ferry Road on 2.95 acres. This location of the property on the east side of Furious Ferry Road. Terms of zoning, you have quite a few different classifications around it. You have to the east, you have Westlake, to the north, you have two P1 properties that were rezoned a few months back. Across street, you have some more P1 as well as an S1 for a church, and also some townhouses as well. This aerial view of the property again, undeveloped, also the existing site, plot of the property, and the overall concept plan. So again, with a request to a standard zoning classification like a CC or a C1 or what have you, they'll give us a concept plan. This doesn't, there's no vesting of the plan. There's no, anything that says they're going to build it exactly as, as they've shown here. Again, with what they've shown us, we do have a restaurant with a drive-through and then retail as well. So again, a good, a good mixture of uses on the property. In terms of the request, you do have, the CC is really what necessitates, or the, excuse me, let me flip that. The drive-through is what necessitates the request to CC. It's not permitted in C1. So again, C1 could also be an option as well on the property. So again, C1 could also be an option as well on the property. In terms of the the property itself, can you go back to the site plan, please? In terms of of the site plan itself, you do have a setback for the the drive-through for the feet. They've met all those requirements. There's no variances requested with this site plan here. Again, things could change with the application to act to to plan review. But again, no, no, no variances on this one at all. That kind of plays into the next slide here. In terms of the future land uses, this is, this is within a professional corridor. It does permit, it does permit commercial uses on the on on this corridor. Even with the name, you know, it does kind of hint that it might be, you know, only professional. That is, however, kind of the upper limit of that is CC, community commercial. Now, one of the things that is mentioned with it is that these, if you are going to have commercial within this, and also offices, to be honest, they're not supposed to impact adjacent neighborhoods. But one of the things with the with this request, we have a condition that speaks to the lighting on the site. That simply what can be a problem, that was one of the things that was here, and then the two properties here as well. We did have a condition that requires them to give us a a photometric plan during site plan review that shows a zero at the residential properties. Also, there is a condition, they have to shield those, shield and also direct away the lighting on the site, and also must must connect to county sewer. Again, staff has recommended approval with conditions of the request. That includes staff recommendation.
Gentlemen, any questions, staff? Is the applicant here? Yes, sir. Anything you'd like to add to the presentation? All right. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Yes, sir. Please come forward, give us your name and home address.
My name is Eric Halsant, who, I'm on 1965 Avonale Lane, which is the townhouses directly across. I just don't have a clear understanding of what kind of establishments are we talking about putting up here? My understanding is that
These are spec. So there there are no tenants that that we know of at this point. Is that correct? Mr. Sterling?
That's my understanding correct.
So from what I read on the paper, like recently, there were talks about putting a liquor store in the area? And that's what I was trying to figure out, is that still a current plan?
To my knowledge, that they're inside, that with the new code, that the liquor store would not be allowed.
Right. That is already, yeah, that is already, that one-mile radius has already been established up the street. So this property falls within that distance. Therefore, this wouldn't be a place for that consideration. But again, they would have whatever, you know, the recommendation, and ultimately, Board of Commissioners approves a rezoning to a commercial district. It would be those uses that fall within that classification.
But let's say they wanted to put a minute mark at type building there, they could have beer and wine there.
Convenience store would be in a permissible use. Beer and wine would be dependent on whether or not they could meet the standards that are set forth for those, that particular use. That is going to be
Too close to the church.
Probably too close to the church unless they can get a waiver or something of that sort.
Okay.
Understood. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone. Approve with conditions, that is.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to disapprove file RZ 220706, rezoning from R2 to CC. Our property located off Furious Ferry Road, tax map 81A, par 429D.
Do I hear a second?
Thank you.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor of disapprove? Motion to disapprove carries five zero. We have no legal matters. Do we have any staffer commissioner comments? Have any public comments? Seeing none, I will move to adjournment. Gentlemen, we need a motion to adjourn.
I've moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to adjourn passes five zero at 6:34. Next commission meeting is Thursday, August 4th, 2022 at 6:00 p.m. Thank you for coming out.